Tess, Tess, Tess.
Tess.
Do I got something charged? I don't have anything. Listen, listen, I think it's working. Think it is, yeah.
Now you get a motion to go back into open session.
Mr. Vice Chair, I make a motion that we return to open session, public session.
I second.
You have a motion and second. Go back into open session. All in favor, they've been on my rating right hand. All opposed, there aren't any. Back to open session. The second session, no decision was made and no action was taken. We now have approval of the minutes for November the second, twenty twenty regular scheduled meeting.
Mr. Vice Chair, make a motion that we approve the minutes for November the second, twenty twenty regular meeting.
I second.
You have a motion and second. All in favor, they've been on my rating right hand. All opposed, there aren't any. Points of celebration, character education, student of the month award.
I'm gonna make an amendment to the agenda. An amendment to the agenda.
Okay, amendment to the agenda. We'd like to make amendment to the agenda also to move up the audit presentation. Do what now?
The audit.
That's what you're referring to, Dr. Torres.
No, we didn't already approve that. I guess I do it in open session, I gotta be part of the minutes.
Yes.
You want to look at possibly doing the points of celebration, recognizing for years of service, and then the COVID updates and suspended remainder.
Due to the absence of so many board members here tonight, we're gonna make amendment to the agenda and reschedule certain points. We're gonna do the character education and recognition of the Eagle Scout Award, COVID-nineteen event updates, and the presentation by auditor of this Adrian Burden.
This man, Mr. Mackey.
And also the recognition of awards for our two board members, Ms. Nann Fleming and Mr. Mackey Norton. I would like to get a motion to table all the other activities on the agenda for a special power meeting possibly or a Zoom meeting.
PD Coalition also.
And the PD Coalition.
Apologize.
We get a motion on that. It's a lot.
Mr. Chair, I was just gonna say, I will make a motion to approve what you just said.
Can I get a second?
And I'll second it.
A motion and second. All in favor, they've been on my rating right hand. All in favor. All right, now we'll go back to our character education student of the month.
All right. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. LaGuard. It gives me such great pleasure to be here tonight. I think this is my first time this semester, so I'm just really honored to have Alicia Thompson. I'm not, oh, Alyssa Thompson. Alyssa Thompson, I'm sorry. You just stand up, please. Alyssa Thompson, here, this is how you come on up, so they can meet you, sweetheart. She's just a darling. And I'd like to share what a teacher who's here with this prompt made I had to say about her. Alyssa Thompson embodies everything that a good citizen is. Good citizenship means to follow rules, conduct one's own self accordingly, and to be a helper in times of need. Alyssa is always looking out for the good of others, is always ready to lend a helping hand in the classroom as well as outside of the classroom. With everything going on with COVID-nineteen, Alyssa has really stepped up to the plate to offer her assistance when others are struggling on school leachy and with other technology issues that may occur. Alyssa is a student that is always caught doing the right thing. And her teacher says, even when there is nobody there to watch, so that's really interesting. She can often be seen giving out hand sanitizer, reminding others of the school rules, and helping to keep our classroom and our school a beautiful, clean, and a safe place for her to learn. She checks herself and others for walking in the hallway as well as to make sure she and her classmates are maintaining social distancing guidelines while walking. Alyssa is a phenomenal student and is always online when she's supposed to be. She is a dependable student that makes sure her work is turning in on time and complete. She wants to please her teachers, and she does her very best in school. Outside of the classroom, Alyssa is a leader and works hard to get others to follow her lead and follow the directions set forth by the school and teachers within the school. Alyssa is a phenomenal leader and an even better citizen. There is not a better representative for good citizenship than Alyssa Thompson. And we are so glad she's here tonight, Mrs. Thompson. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Good job, you're late.
Caught it just in time.
What school is Alyssa from?
Clayo, Clayo. I just hear Clayo.
Representative from Clayo is not here. If I do it.
You can represent Clayo.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. LaGuard. My name is Chris Peters, Act Assistant Principal at Monroe Middle School of Discovery. It's my honor to introduce the middle school level character education student of the month for November, Jaden Parnell. This is what his teacher, Mr. Torres, has to say about me. Citizenship means obeying rules both in school and out of school, demonstrating good sportsmanship, making others feel valued for their accomplishments, and always saying positive. This definition is what Jaden Parnell portrays in my class and in school. From day one of this school year, Jaden has perfect attendance in both digital and face-to-face classes. I also observed him during group collaborative activities in my class. I noticed that he helps the group mates understand the lesson and teaches others how to complete the group task. He's very obedient to class expectations, rules, and procedures. He shows positive attitude towards me and his classmates. He strives hard to have good grades. He displays good character, such as being responsible, honest, a good listener, and kind. He's a good role model who deserves to be rewarded as the student of the month.
Mr. Griggs, you'd like to have him honor, that's one of your students.
Sure, I'd be glad.
There you go, thank you. Make him, make him, make him account. Make him accountable.
Good job, good job, awesome. Give both our students, man. Next on the agenda, Eagle Scout Award, Mr. Jaheem McLean.
Jaheem McLean is a student at Marlboro County High School. He is an eleventh grade student, student body vice president. He's very heavily involved with a lot of the activities that take place at the high school. Unfortunately, he could not be here tonight because he is taking one of his courses at NETC with the dual enrollment program. But he received his Eagle Scout Award a week ago, Sunday. And as all of you know, if you've been involved with the Scouts, this is the highest of the highest of awards. And so even though he could not be here tonight, he wanted us to go ahead and move forward. And he shared a picture, and he is excited about achieving such a high award. And we're happy to honor him on this night. And we'll try to get him back in January for those that don't know him, so that they can see him and hear from him. And I think you too will be impressed with this remarkable young man.
Now I have public comments?
Wait a minute, we have PD Coalition.
Okay, all right, PD Coalition, we'll get that one first. Awesome. PD Coalition.
Janice Roger and Friends. I can't tell who's who because I see masks. I do, I can see you.
Thank y'all for letting me come speak to you. I'm Janice Roger. I am the vice chairman for PD Coalition Against Domestic and Sexual Assault. Regional board, and I'm your local chapters chairman. Over two years ago, y'all, as a board, donated one of your mobile units that you were decommissioning off this site, I believe. And we were given that, and we put it out on our women's shelter sign out in Wallace. It's taken us about two years to get the money and a lot of volunteer help to get that in place. But we now have it actually moved to us about two weeks ago. Hoping May, maybe May fourth, to have an open house, and all of y'all will be invited. But in the meantime, we brought a couple staff who will change just a little bit about what it looks like now and what it's gonna mean to this shelter. So I have Kristi Moore, who is our coordinator of volunteers and educational services, and Janice Hamlin, who is over the actual client services value. So I'll start with Kristi. Before she starts the slideshow we put together for y'all, I just wanted to give you a real quick overview of who New Beginnings Transitional Shelter is. Can y'all hear me a little better now? Does this sound?
He's gonna turn to the left one.
So New Beginnings Transitional Shelter was opened in June two thousand seventeen. About that same time, y'all convened and approved to give us the donation of this all-frame modular building. New Beginnings Transitional Shelter actually started as an emergency shelter back in two thousand and four. Once we ran as an emergency shelter, we realized there was a need for transitional shelter for former victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. Thirty to ninety days is the max a victim can usually stay in an emergency state shelter, which we do currently still have. And we thought this project would open up the doors to a lot more women and children who are still remaining homeless after their time of thirty, ninety days is up. So at New Beginnings Transitional Shelter, these former victims can stay up to twenty-four months with us, get onsite services. As the shelter continues the work of supporting survivors at New Beginnings, we have the opportunity to increase the number of women and children served. By relocating our staff officers from the house and into this modular classroom building that was donated, we can now convert one of the offices in the house into two additional bedrooms that will include fourteen additional bed spaces. These additional two bedrooms will increase bed space from twenty-six to forty plus, not including babies and kids. Thus allowing even more victims to be served. The new resident services building will be onsite, I should say is onsite now, behind the shelter in Wallace. In the short time being over New Beginnings has served over one hundred and ten women and children at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty, which was June thirtieth of this year, which includes over sixteen thousand four hundred forty-three nights of shelter. The shelter has also had to turn away seventy-eight women and children due to limited space during the same timeframe. As a coalition, by definition, must include different partners working towards a common goal. This project can create a new beginning to expand the population of victims. And PD Coalition believes what this partnership continues to show that together we can promote a community that values the basic human desire to be free from physical threat and harm. And through these efforts, we can make the PD region a safer, more compassionate community. And now I just wanna show y'all a brief little video of this project basically from start to finish. And I hope you enjoy it, and we look forward to having you all out today, so we see you in person. Thank you.
Look forward to it.
So that's the floor plan right there for the inside.
All right, let's try again. Take the microphone over there. Oh, wow. That was awesome.
So I just think PD Coalition for that presentation. Thank you for the work you're doing up in the wild area.
Thank you all. We could not have done it without support of the school district and Dr. LaGuard. We thank you so much. We would like to let Ms. Janice Hamlin speak to y'all just one second, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Again, thank you for allowing us to come out and present to you today. It was very important that you get to see this project, PD Coalition. I wanna thank Kristi Moore. She's our faculty coordinator. Let me tell you, this woman right here, she's a beast. She worked endless hours from the beginning to the end to make this happen. This would have never happened without her. And I also wanna thank Janice Roger for hanging in there with us, as far as the Marlboro County chapter doing all the work that she's done as well. This means so much to us because I personally, being a survivor of domestic violence, know what it's like to live in a shelter. And the whole purpose of this vision that Kristi had, she got this vision for vision was so that the women could feel like they're in a home, not just a shelter. So we got out of the here, we're into our offices, we have our space, they have their space, and they can maneuver the houses though it's their own without all of our business taking place in the house. So we're very excited about that, and I'm just so thankful that Kristi, I just have to keep giving her props for this, that she had a vision. Those of you who live in a word of life, where God says, "A man without a vision will perish." And as you see, we did not perish. She brought this to fruition. The women are happy, we are happy. We're able to meet with them in the privacy of our office without anybody on top of each other. We just thank you so much. And I would like, if you don't mind, to come out and present something to Dr. LaGuard. Kristi, Janice, also right here. Because someone is so trying to take a picture for us. You ready to do it? I would like, on behalf of PD Coalition and New Beginnings Transitional Shelter, to present this plaque to you. That reads, "With profound appreciation to the Marlboro County School District, with generous support of the PD Coalition, expanding horizons campaign at New Beginnings Transitional Shelter. We're so honored to present you this.
Thank you so much. You're very welcome. I would like to say, I prefer with everything you said, Kristi, she goes and gets it. I was very happy to be able to support these type endeavors in the community.
Absolutely.
Thank you for all that you're doing and asking to continue to do so.
Absolutely.
Thank you all so much.
Again, thank you, PD Coalition, for all that you do.
Thank you.
Okay, we have recognition of years of service. Ms. Nann Fleming and Mr. W. Mackey Norton. Ms. Nann Fleming and Mr. Norton.
I'll ask, well, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I asked him to come up as you, as you bring, you go ahead.
Mackey has served us as an educator for about, how many years, Mr. Norton?
Forty-one.
Forty-one years, and as a board member. And Ms. Fleming has been on the board for twelve years, Ms. Nann?
Yes.
Fifteen?
Yeah, they got that you get it, fifteen.
Yeah, we came on together.
Well, I think, Mr.?
Well, you can take that off, I'll read what the plaque say. They're both going to be presented with a nice plaque that says, to Ms. Nann Fleming, Mr. William Mackey Norton, and great appreciation for your years of dedicated service as a school board member here in Marlboro County School District. Hashtag three four five, two thousand twenty, and we present these to you. And Ms. Nann Fleming, Mackey Norton, and this will face this way, dear. Those are these.
Well, we can. You sure you want to take away from them?
Well, we'll take one without a remember.
Yeah, okay. I remember a massive stuff. Just wanna make a quick note that Ms. Nann, the building, she's leading the building as the only level six, school of rest members from Marlboro County that I have to leave. So that's a compliment to the level six. And fifteen years to be on board, seventy to be on board, thirty years before they make that accomplishment. So then this is a compliment to let you know that she was not just on the board, you're on board. She got educated, she brought these back to time, and they was getting out here. About just a time out. So thank you to Ms. Nann, and thank you to Norton, all of y'all.
I'll also say that recognition for Ms. Nann's continued years of service and for her leadership in reaching level six, a scholarship will be named in her honor to a graduate women's senior from the class of two thousand twenty-one for this year. And so more information will come out about that and be shared with the school and the principal. But on behalf of Marlboro County School District, I need certainly a superintendent, Ms. Nann, I want to say thank you for what you've done and what you will continue to do. And Mackey Norton, the same to you as well, on behalf of Marlboro County School District and its superintendent, I'd like to say thank you for the work you've done, not just as a school board member, but as an educator who was here in Marlboro County. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll have public comments. First on the list is Mr. Tim McNeil.
Well, good evening, board members, superintendent of the community. Can I speak louder than I pick? Can y'all hear me? They're right here.
They can't hear you on the TV. It goes to the TV.
First of all, I just want to say that nothing takes the place of face-to-face education. We know that. All throughout South Carolina, the country, nation, students are failing. We know they need to get back to school. But I just think any talk of faith is through tonight would definitely be premature with where I know it's going. I ask every board member to consider the community, their families. It's terrifying in Marlboro County. They don't, they express to me they don't have upstairs, downstairs, guest room, quarantine. It's a real concern. Multi-generational families living in houses, from grandchildren to great-grandparents. That's a concern. Our teachers, big concern, especially for me. I have a student in tenth grade, my spouse also. Our teachers, big concern, especially for me. I have a student in temporary, my spouse also. It's a tough decision, but I ask that any decision with phase three be made closer to the going back there. And we all know there's a district in South Carolina Lexington, this morning tonight, they lost a fifty-year-old teacher from COVID complications. And something like that would shape this community to the core. Also, as I talk to people, they say, "The children can go to Walmart, call us by law, they can go to school." But trip to Walmart is different than a six-hour stay in a school. I know schools are doing mitigating things. When I go to the high school, I see them wiping down hand sanitizer, but it's still a concern. And also, if you do at that time vote to go to four days, give parents a option to opt out. Because meaning four days, going to be more students in the building, what's the class going to look like? We have to take all of that into consideration. Also, if you do go to phase three, give us more information on the data of the school. Not without at least some personal information, just the numbers, uh, the positive cases of students and staff. And I can't stand up here without lifting Ms. Fleming and Mr. Norton and saying, "Thank y'all." Uh, standing this auditorium, Ms. Fleming fought. She was ashamed of the way it looked. And look what we have now this way.
Absolutely.
And Mr. Norton, you are iconic in McCall. And I would love to see this auditorium, name Ms. Nan Fleming auditorium, because she fought for it. I know Mr. Coatsman, that must say. So thank you, Ms. Nan. Oh, boy, thank you.
Mister, it's, oh, I'm sorry. Just can I just say one thing while he's brought that up? I, I wish we had children here tonight. Um, everything that, uh, I've done, it was never for you teachers. It was always for the children. Every, every, every fight and, uh, talking about the, uh, the scholarship, my first thought was give it to, uh, deserving female. But it wouldn't let me do it. I says, "Give it to a deserving student." So every student in this county, you didn't have to, I serve district four. But every fight that Nan Fleming, every word I said was for the children of Marlboro County Schools, district. Not just for West Benesville. If I got something good for West Benesville, everyone benefited. And that's what, uh, I think that made our board, uh, we were not territorial. And I hope you don't get territorial, territorial, because we're too small to be territorial. So everything that I've done, every meeting, it was not for West Benesville District Four. It was for Marlboro County Schools children. The Wallace, Clio, the Blenheim, McCall, all around. Thank you, Mr. McNeil.
Okay, awesome. Next, we have Ms. Carolyn Prince. Mayor Carolyn. It's just a sentence for the night. Our mayor, correct.
Thank you. You save a little postage.
Thank you.
I'd like to begin by thanking the service of Ms. Fleming and Mr. Norton to the, the children in Marlboro County. Uh, I'm just giving you a, asking of the Freedom of Information Act copies, printed copies of the minutes for all of your meetings, regular board meetings, call meetings, and any other workshops that need, uh, minutes may have been taken for July, January first, two thousand nineteen through November twenty-third, twenty twenty. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Mr. Cleveland Jenkins. Mr. Jenkins, how are you doing tonight, sir?
Good, good. How are you?
Going fine.
Thank you. Okay, sir, Carolyn. Thank you so much.
First, I'd like to say, uh, good afternoon to school board members, Dr. McCord, and to everyone else in the building. What I have is, I present to the school board members, is a letter regarding our last meeting, uh, November seventh, twenty twenty. I'm going to just read the body to get into it, read the body of the letter. The members of the Eastside School Preservation Alumni Association would like to express our sincere appreciation for the time and consideration extended to us at the November seventh board meeting. Further, we feel that the board decision to delay any disposition actions regarding the Eastside property for one year is reasonably appropriate. ESPPA, ESPPA will certainly build this timely parameter into its planning and related pre-development endeavors going forward. In short, what it's saying, what you did at the last meeting, given us this year to come up with a plan, we so appreciate it. Not only do we feel like it was a good thing to do, it was the right thing to do. We appreciate that, I'll say it again. Already, I had, I've had people come up to me and ask, "Hey, Cleveland, what's, what's going to happen?" What I've said to them is, "Give us time. In time, we're going to make it right. We're going to make it work." This is an opportunity for us to do something very, very special for the interest of all the citizens of Marlboro County. We do appreciate, yes, I say it again, I'll say it once more, we appreciate what you've done for us. We're moving forward. Again, we thank you for your support. We appreciate your, uh, continued support as we move forward. You've given us an opportunity as well to give quarterly progress on our quarterly report on our progress that we do intend to do. As part of our planning as well. What I'll say at this point in time, more to come. But again, thank you for all of your help. We ask you to join us as we take advantage of this special opportunity for all the citizens of Marlboro County. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. You didn't write it on? Uh, Dr. McCord, we would like to move forward now with the audit. Uh, you want to move with the board items for discussion?
Uh, if, if we can, and I think a motion's been made, it's been seconded and passed, that we suspend, uh, the bulk of the meeting until we have a called meeting. You have a call, but I would like to address, and I think you did include this, the COVID updates, if I can?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I, I'll do that, um, in particular because, as you go, but it's also very timely. Uh, we, who has that? You go do the quick one. Okay. As you know, as you know, uh, each week, or some of you may not know, each, each week, we do a Facebook Live because that appears to be the, uh, most accessible way of reaching out to Marlboro County. Uh, we, we have, uh, done this since about, I'm going to say, April. And we'll continue to do it. But one of the reasons we try to have a live, we also have had Zoom meetings where we've invited, uh, both county and city officials to be, uh, on the call. Uh, and to this date, we're still looking for some more opportunities to have everyone involved because COVID affects all of us. It's not just a school issue, it's a community issue. And so we try to give accurate information as it relates to the school district and what's going on in the school district, knowing full well that it does impact those in the community. And I say all of that just to say this, as of two PM today, and by the way, the number has changed, but as of two PM today, this data is what we look like in Marlboro County School District, period. Today, uh, we have thirty-two students that are quarantined, and we have twenty-three staff members that are quarantined. And if you look to the right, you'll see we have five students that are positive. So of the thirty-two that are quarantined, five are actively positive. And of the twenty-three staff members, five are actively positive. Now, what does that mean? That means we don't have a widespread pandemic in the schools, but you can't take the schools out of the community.
No, you can't.
Because we do have issues in the community, and sometimes they filter into the schools. If you go to the next slide, because I want to address an, an, another, uh, issue, and that is how it has impacted us in the building since July one, two thousand twenty. July one was the first day of teachers for two thousand twenty, I'm sorry, teachers and staff. And so we have this information broken down by school. Those staff members that have been quarantined, as well as those staff members that have tested positive. Now, we have third, I think we have thirty-eight hundred students and about six hundred plus staff members. And as you can see, our numbers are not as high as some would believe, but they're not as low as we would like for them to be. But to date, these are accurate numbers that reflect the district. We quarantined ninety students at some point or time, one hundred and staff, one hundred and nineteen staff members at some point in time. Students, of course, since September second, staff members since July one. Since September second, the number of students that have tested positive, that have been enrolled in Marlboro County School District, that number is thirty-nine. And since, uh, July one, the number of staff members that have tested positive has been twenty-six. So again, uh, the numbers are not as high as some would, uh, believe, but they're not as low as we would like for them to be. On last week, uh, we had a meeting in Columbia with the superintendents around the state, as well as the State Department of Education and the Superintendent of Education, Miley Spearman. And we were able to receive, uh, training and more information on the Binax Rapid Testing, uh, kits that have been sent out to all school districts. Some school districts have said, "We don't want them." Some school districts are using them, uh, but we did not want to make that decision alone. And so we attended the meeting, when I say we, I attended the meeting in Columbia last week, and I immediately came back and sat down with our healthcare officials here in Marlboro County, as well as with our lead nurse for the school district, uh, Ms. Malachi. And we made the decision collectively that right now, uh, we are not looking to offer testing at school sites, and this is why. The rapid test is a fifteen-minute test, but it contradicts what we ask and what our protocols say. Only those that are showing signs and symptoms would actually receive the test. We say those that are showing signs and symptoms, we ask that they stay home, go get tested, and only when they have been cleared, come, come to the school building. And so because we have been, uh, very fortunate here in Marlboro County to have free testing sites located throughout the county, whether it be in, uh, Blenheim, Clio, McCall, Benesville, or the Wallace area. Uh, we also have a satellite site at the Annex Building on, uh, Broad Street, as well as the, uh, Care South Center on Highway Nine. And so because we have, uh, several, uh, places where tests can be done and completed free of charge, uh, we're going to continue with our protocols and ask and encourage parents, if and staff. If you are sick, and you know you're sick, if you have symptoms, and you know you have symptoms, if you've been around someone that has been exposed, we're asking that you go and get tested, but not at our sites.
Of course.
And of course, uh, we're asking everyone to continue to follow with our protocol, wearing a mask, social distancing, and of course, uh, hand washing at all times. Yes, sir.
So Binks Rapid Testing, uh,
I can't.
Binks Rapid Testing, uh, they're supplying us with these free test kits.
Hold up the microphone. You said, are you asking about the Binax testing?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Binax testing.
Yes, sir.
They're offering us these test kits for free.
And I have them, yes, sir.
And we have them.
Correct.
But we're not going to use them. That's what you were saying, that you don't think that we should use them?
Correct. Based on, on the conversations with the healthcare officials, uh, and getting sufficient feedback from our nurses, uh, we believe that we would, we would, we might potentially do more not good than we would do good. Because again, only those that are showing signs and symptoms would be tested. And so if they test, then we have to, uh, safely secure the area where a person is tested, as well as go back through the tracing, contact tracing, in the building.
But wouldn't we have to do that even if the, the student or the staff member tested positive at another site? You would have to do the same thing in school as far as contact tracing also, wouldn't you?
Oh, we would contact trace, yes, sir. But we would, we would utilize the services of DHEC in doing that. Right now, we have, uh, we have the services of DHEC with the regional DHEC representative. Uh, we, we receive updated information on the numbers, uh, here in Marlboro County, uh, from Care South and DHEC. And this is the course of action that we believe would be best.
We don't think that that would give us an edge to maybe slowing down, uh, spreads by doing the rapid testing and asking that person out of the school and, and knowing on sight? I mean, I think it would be beneficial. Why would they offer us this test for free? That's my question. The, I'm, I'm assuming all the school district that has this now, that has offered it to them?
Yes, and I, and I can give you, uh, the answer that, and I, I won't speak for, uh, superintendents that aren't here, but collectively, uh, the, the answer to the question, why would they give us the test? A better question is, why would they offer us the test without first included? I think I sent to each of you the email, uh, from, uh, Superintendent Miley Spearman, as well as, uh, the State Department of Education and all of us were surprised when we received, or when we saw that, uh, on the news, that this testing would be offered. Uh, had we been at the table, and I'll use for an example, the conversation from Thursday and Friday, then I don't know if the decision would have been made, uh, because it's not one that lends itself to what we believe to be in the best interest. And I'll give and use as an example, if I can. So this morning, we knew of a situation where a family, uh, a, a large family with several students in school, uh, were, uh, on the way to school, but one knew that they had been ill for a couple of days and was showing signs and symptoms. Had they not been rerouted to, uh, Care South, then each of those kids would have been in the building. Uh, we can't guarantee what would happen when they're in the building and possibly causing exposure for other students in the building. So if we can keep, if we can keep folks out of the building, uh, to get tested, we would rather see that, uh, be the course of action.
Okay.
That's right.
So, so if you had a student in school or staffer in school that was showing signs of, or symptoms of having COVID, you would not use the rapid test?
Well, what we have in place now with our protocol is that if we suspect someone has symptoms or showing signs, then they are quarantined. We have quarantine spaces in the building. Uh, parents would be contacted, and then they would be routed to the nearest. Right now, we, we use, uh, the Annex Building, as well as, uh, the building on, uh, Highway Nine. And then there's a mobile unit usually somewhere in Marlboro County each day, and we have a, a schedule that we post with that as well. So we would reroute them to, to one of those places. The other thing that, that we had to, uh, discuss and consider is, let's say we do the fifteen-minute rapid test, and the person does turn out to be positive. And now we have to dispose of everything properly, uh, from the test to, uh, whatever it is that, you know, the nurses would use. would use. And so, it came to be, well, where would you test? Would you test outside of the building? Would you, would you set up a tent and do the testing in the tent, which is what happens when they do the mobile units? And so, the complications associated with it just proved to be a little more demanding than what our nurses thought to be prudent, as well as our healthcare officials. Because the only people that would test would be the nurses and an athletic trainer. We have one athletic trainer in the district, but we have nurses. By the way, I believe we have two nurses that are quarantined right now, and so, we're down to nurses, and so, we're just making a decision to the best of our ability. And I think Nurse Malachi is here. Did I leave anything out, Nurse Malachi?
So, and that's what you're saying, even though you're not testing on the school grounds, anyone that shows signs, anyone that you think may be exposed, you're quarantining them and then sending them to the proper facility, so they can be tested at that time?
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct. By, by those that are doing it on a regular basis?
I don't know if this is a normal protocol across the state, but even if you are rapidly tested, which I was, by the way, last week, and I tested negative, but I still went on quarantine until they could do the lab test, which came back negative, by the way. But, if you did it at school and did a rapid test, and the student turned out to be negative, you'd still have to quarantine. So, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to benefit the student or the school to test rapid testing at school. If they tested positive, of course, it would, but if they tested negative, it wouldn't help the child at all. So, all the schools right now.
And, and I do want everyone to know, as well as the community, this wasn't a decision that was made just haphazardly. This was a decision, we, we reached out to our nurses first, to ask what their thoughts were about it. Did not want to do anything rash or irrational, so to speak, in making a declaration that we will be offering tests at the school sites. We did receive the kits, as we said we would, and we knew after we had all the information that we needed to have, this was going to be the decision that we're bringing up tonight. So. Another thing that I'd like to bring up, and, and the gentleman that came up, he must have been reading my cards, I, I'm going to just go to the last survey, if, if you will. Just because I think it's important to note, what he said was spot-on. This was a survey that we sent out last week, and you can go back to the first survey for a second, just because I can't remember the number. Almost eleven hundred respondents. Eighty-one percent of those that responded are parents in the district, twelve percent are teachers and staff, and then of those that responded, they responded by letting us know how, how they, how many school-aged learners are in the home. But overwhelmingly, you will see that eighty-plus percent of those that, eighty-plus percent of those that surveyed said that they do not, right now, feel safe with the school district entertaining a four-day-a-week option. That was going to be a point of discussion for tonight, because we have had many parents call and say that they want students to be in school because of the academic deficiencies that students have been showing, but I believe right now, it would be better if we prolong having a decision on this until we return after the break. We'll continue to monitor the numbers, we'll continue to update the community with the live posts that we do each week, as well as the information that we share on the website. And again, as I said, we'll submit another survey at the beginning of the year, two thousand twenty-one, and I'll bring that to the January eleventh board meeting. Thank you.
Question on that, Dr. Gordon. Being that the country is on a rise with the COVID, with cases getting, if we receiving a large spike, is it possible that we could go virtual for the remainder of the month or something? I, I see a lot of school districts doing that, but maybe their cases are higher than ours are right now.
Right, and that, that's a great, that's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, I'll finish.
That's a great question. One county in, in the state recently did just what you were asking, and that is, as of today, they reverted back to a full virtual program, so they removed face-to-face completely, but the numbers in their county have spiked up higher than they have in surrounding counties. If, and by the way, they received the call from DHEC with the suggestion and the recommendation that they do so. If we at any time receive a call from DHEC or CDC saying or suggesting that this would be in the best interest for all in Marlboro County, we would definitely do it. But as we look at the slide that was shown earlier, that was as of 2:00 PM today, but since 2:00 PM, we have had additional students and staff that have had to go into quarantine. And so, if, if, and I can't predict the future, but if tomorrow comes and we see where we have reason to be alarmed or concerned, then I'll definitely make communication with the board to let you know of a decision that may possibly be made with your support. But I would not make a decision without getting and informing the board first.
Do you feel that we have the capability in Marlboro County to go totally virtual?
Yes.
With internet access available to everyone in the county, they would have access to it?
I believe we can, but I can't guarantee what the internet or broadband services might be here in Marlboro County. And I say this because, just as we have talked and discussed, and I'm sure those out in the audience that are of the educational field, including myself, we have time-to-time spotty services. And so, would it be ideal? It would be the best that we could offer. I can say that to you.
Thank you.
That's it for that?
Yes, that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon.
Just the last thing would be having Ms. Burr present.
Yep. Okay, at this time, we will have twenty always presentations, Ms. Andrea Burr. Adrian Burr. How are you doing tonight, Ms. Burr?
I'm doing okay. Sorry about that. I'm grateful that you came and asked you to do a presentation today. I just let you know, this is your draft. It's not for a presentation, it's a, it's a, it's a, so, we have one more class, a program, it's called ECPR, it's a, it's a, it's a, and so, it's still in the process right now, and we expect it to be, it's going to be, that means that we might, but we do want to, to go, to, 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 to. The first one, you have communications, these are just communications that are required, that are all taken, that, that, to the board, you guys can use each other, I think it's a, 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 a,
I don't have any questions because I don't understand this.
You said the adjustment, those are the adjustments that were made?
Yes, sir.
When you say adjustments made, what do you mean by?
It just be identified that, it can, it could be as simple as the pulling SEPL, it's not correct. So, um, the first one, well, first one is recording retainage on construction contract. That's similar to the industry to report about the maintenance. The cover of both, uh, this cover identified, if there was an issue, CSI, not gold, and something forward, so she didn't go with that, and maybe maybe an entry issue, that's something this cover identified, you can say, as a PDC. There's some of those in there as well, but we always like to provide these to you. Any questions? Like I said, if you guys, if you have any questions on that, Dr. McCord has my email, Joe, hesitation, Joe, Tim, I'll be glad to talk to you about any of the questions you might have. We also want to take them to thank the district for allowing us to be in our own terms. We have a great relationship with them, and they're always open and providing, and we will immediately and always help them all. Thank you, Dr. McCord. Thank you, Miss Howard, we appreciate all your assistance.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I can, I know this was the last item on tonight's agenda. If you would allow me, because I see them both here tonight, the newly elected board members.
Yes.
If you would allow me to have them stand, and if you would just, if more work comes to might, but just to let everyone see who they are.
Well.
We have the outgoing board members, and these are our newly elected board members. I'll let you, Chairman Flowers, who you are, and if you want to come up, say something. And same courtesy, I'd like to extend to you, Mr. Gaiman. They can't hear, if you come up here, they can hear you on the mic. Thank you, Adrian.
Thank you, Dr. McCord. My name is Joe, I represent the District's President, Mark Hauer.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity, Dr. McCord, board members. My name is Reginald Gaiman, District Four Representative.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations to both of you.
And again, I'm going to miss you two. You did a lot together. I got one thing I'd like to say. Both of you got some big shoes to fill.
Yes, sir.
But I'm quite sure they can help.
And I'd like to say something, too, to the board members that are here. I have considered it an honor and a privilege to work with you.
Absolutely.
We have made a lot of progress in the last four years, and I'm proud to be a part of that.
Yes, absolutely.
To David and to the gentleman, I'm sorry.
Reginald.
Reginald. Uh, I do, it's a challenge, but it's well worth the time, it's well worth the challenge. And, um, I only ask this, from leaders everywhere, whether you lead a whole lot of people or whether you lead a few. Please lead without prejudice, hatred.
Absolutely.
And selfishness, and jealousy, and greed. Lead for the people, only for the people.
Absol- absolutely.
And the country and county you serve.
Absolutely. Very, very well said.
Well said, well said. Any other comments?
I've always said that I have to do, have to do these children right because when I go to the nursing home, they're going to give me my medicine first because they're going to remember. So I can't say that I have not done what I did all selfishly, uh, with just not, this goodness, I'm looking out for me in these years to come, that they will remember, yeah, that's Ms. Fleming, that's Miss Nann, there. We're going, we're going to start on this end because she's down there, and I don't have to hurt longer than everybody else. But it has, it's the greatest thing you'll ever do. School board work is some of the best work you will ever do.
Well, Miss Nann, Mr. Mackey, you may have one more meeting.
Say what?
We have tabled the items on the dinner till, we have four board members out tonight.
Done, finished, no more, I'm out of here.
Going to ask you to come back one more time.
I ain't going to do it. I'm done.
Well, we, we, we may have a quarrel without them. You're not done yet, Miss Nann. So, um.
You coming back, Mr. Norris?
What we'll do is let the the board chair see where they stands at, and our other members and, uh, come back decide on a special call meeting or a virtual meeting. All depends on what we're going to do. Table it for next Monday night. Dr. McCord will let you get with the board chair, you decide on which day you want to do it, and they can get back with all of us. So we can get back to the board business that we have finished tonight. Y'all want to end it until next year? Doesn't matter either way. We can make that decision next week sometime.
I think, as you said, I'll get with the board chair by Wednesday. With his permission, we'll send some dates out and see if they fit. And then if they do, that's great. If they don't, I'll leave it up to you.
All right.
They couldn't cut an eye.
So on that note, Mr. Driggs, on that note, Mr. Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
I will, too.
All favor, raise your hand. This meeting is adjourned.